Welcome to Tuesday, April 17th, 2018, regular Selectmen's meeting. All the Selectmen are here except for, the Selectmen plant has been excused. There's the Town Manager, Town Clerk, Town Assessor, and various members of the public. Please rise with me and salute the flag.
Spiteful allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Don't forget about all the young men and women in our armed forces that are fighting, stationed all over the world, so I'm gonna thank them every day.
First order of business is approval of the minutes from our April 3rd meeting.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. That brings us to our first public comment. First public comment is fifteen minutes long. If you have a comment, please step to the podium, state your name and where you live. Go in once, go in twice. No public comment. We have no public hearing scheduled tonight. There's reports of committees. BCTV has not had their monthly meeting, so there's nothing new to report there. And then, Envision Berwick. I will say that we had the Communit- Community Leadership Engagement Academy, there we go, last Thursday. This is the second year that it's been hosted here. It's through the Maine Cooperative Extension Service, and they invite people from all over. There are many people from New Hampshire actually here this time around. And there were Town Selectmen, there was a Town Manager, the crew from Dexter, Maine came down. There was a gentleman from, oh, up past Conway that was down here, I spoke to. And basically, they came down to see what we have been doing over the last five or six years revolving around the Envision Berwick Group, basically, and how they have gotten the community engaged with what's going on across the street, but also with everything else that they're doing, from the waterfront to the Recreation Committees, the Trail Committees, things like that. It was a packed house in here on Thursday. And they do a little workshop here.
Why don't you email us, can I get an email when this stuff is coming up? You know, I'm not writing it down or at the meeting. Just send me an email when things like that are happening, so I know.
Okay.
I'll make sure board members get copied on everything.
Appreciate it, thank you.
But yeah, it was very well received, and it just shows again how much the volunteers in Berwick have been doing for us, because it's all been driven by them.
Oh, yeah.
So...
Yes.
Appointment, presentations, and other guests? We have none. It's gonna be a quick meeting. Unfinished business. Anything under unfinished business? There's Town Managers' Report.
As I said earlier, I did get a message from Mr. Cahia for campaigning. And I also got, talked to his attorney last week before he went off on vacation, and he said he'd get back to me today, but I haven't heard from him. But Mark did leave a message that he's back in the country as of today, and he would try to get some time put aside to get up here and talk what he's doing. He has been talking with several of the contractors that Rick Vandenberg sent him to, and Rick and I talked today. That's one of three, hopefully all three of them. He's been talking to a civil engineer and a construction management company. I think we know who all three of them are, but he will get back to me on that, hopefully. And we can, I did speak to our attorney about some of the issues that we're having, and she was going to start having conversation. Again, she's talked to Roger Clement in the past, getting up to stuff on what's been going on here. So she has some questions to ask him and about some of the things that are happening. So hopefully, it's real important that Mark comes here, because we are getting ready to start the Blue Sort Building, and Kredier has issued, given us the task lists for that project. And part of that involves the parking lot. We're hoping to maybe take some of the contaminated soils from the Blue Sort Building in that area and put it over there and then encapsulate it with pavement, if that's what Mark wants to do that.
What, how much, is there a lot of dirty dirt there?
We don't know how much yet, but there's some.
So it's never test borings done or anything?
Not that I know of.
I can't believe that there's a lot of contamination there.
I can't either, I can't either.
That building started out-
That was always the Hyde building.
Well, it started out as a lumber and hardware store.
Oh, it did?
Yeah. Let's see if I can, the Golden Rule Hardware.
It'd be nice to have that now, now.
And then after the Tanrey took it over, they used it mostly just for storage for many years until they did, started doing the Blue Hyde sorting over there. And that really didn't include a lot of chemicals, as far as I know.
No, I always just saw a forklift going across, just hides on it, in and out, in and out, manning or whatever they did.
So I can't believe that there's a lot of contamination there.
Yeah, that's yet to be determined, I guess, but they're gonna start doing that. They have drawn down some of that grant already. We're still waiting on matching funds, and Mark left in the message, said that Roger has that funding, it's just a matter of giving us a check. So I'll talk to him tomorrow, hopefully.
Mike, I have a question. What can we do to get that green space brought up to grade, and loomed over nice? It'd be nice to put some trees there this spring.
Yeah.
Get a few extra trees kicking around, it'd be nice to get them, just kinda get them started.
Yeah, I think Frank Underwood and Derek, who was here at our last meeting, we've been talking about that, and we talked about it with, meeting with the Envision Berwick Group, that we really need to start planning all of that for our sidewalks and that site. These are things that we can start doing, and Mark can pay for that over there, but I think he has plans, but I think it's gonna be dependent on his civil engineering group, whoever he hires, which is one of the groups that Rick sent him. So I think once we have Mark in the-
It's gonna be burmed up because the soil is, we need a good depth, right?
I'm hoping I can get Mark here for two or three days, so he can meet with the Board of Selectmen, he can meet with the Envision Berwick Group, spend some time if he's got contractors, but we need to really push the envelope. It's time to get going on that site.
We could just leave you with a $10 million check and tell you to get it done.
There you go. You take care of it. Great landscaping. So that, hopefully within the next couple of weeks, he'll be here. Now he's back in the country, and we'll get going on that. On another note, the dispatch, we finalized up all the dispatch costs, and they think that they can start dispatching Sanford Dispatch Regionals by July 1st. So we do have to come up with some funding for new radios to transmit and some other things, but-
New radios for the cruises?
No, this is for the dispatch centers. And also the EMA Center.
South Berwick going there too?
Yeah, both of us are going. The costs are pretty identical.
To what we paid in South Berwick?
Oh, no, the cost is higher. It's just for dispatch, the total cost for dispatching with all the rental of the tower and the micro dish and all that, it's about $220 a year.
$220,000.
Yeah, $220,000.
$220.
We were paying, at the peak, when I first came here, you were paying about $186,000. So the price has gone up, but it, and then the contract, depends on what you would like, but they wanted to do a 10-year contract, and Perry and I said, why don't we try, talk about a five-year contract with the option for five more? And that will get us through and see how they do. But, and the initial cost is around 60-some-odd thousand for all the radios and all the other stuff up front.
We have that budgeted, right?
No, we have the dispatch budgeted, but Maureen thinks we have some funding in other areas that we can find before year-end.
So we have to rent a space on a cell tower?
Yeah, we'll have to rent space on the tower, we'll have to pay a fee for the micro dish that will be used, and we also have to pay a fee for fiber optics that-
You're gonna put a dish on, put something on top of the water tower first?
Yeah.
Instead of renting a tower.
Well, Two Way worked with, Two Way Communications worked with Coastal, Southern Maine Coastal Communications there, Sanford Group. And it took them a while to hash out what they thought would be the best options to get clear transition, transmission. So I think we finalized that.
You know what, I don't, you know, they know all the, they know it all. We're not educated enough to ask the right questions, and you know, that's, you know what I mean?
Yeah, well-
We're really not educated.
Lyle and Nick from Two Way have been real good to the town of Berwick, I think, and I actually trust Lyle.
Trust what they're saying, okay.
I trust what they're saying, and they weren't always in agreement with the group from Sanford. So whatever, I mean, I know Chief Town was at a meeting and came into the conference room when they were talking, and it wasn't a quiet conversation. It was quite heated about what were the best options, but whatever it is, they figured it out, because I don't talk that language by any means. But, and Lyle questioned some of the costs, which have changed to less than what they were initially giving us. So I think it will be a good relationship.
York was not, that didn't pan out.
Well, that didn't pan out. They had given us costs of over $300,000.
Really?
And when all of a sudden, when Sanford gave us a price the next day, when I've been asking for two months to get a price from them, they seem to come up with a price. So I don't want to do business with people like that. I don't think it's smart, so.
Too bad.
And, so we'll see.
And if we had gone to York, we still would've had been renting space on a cell tower and-
Yeah, we would've done all of that and maybe more, so.
And this includes the PSAP?
This includes the PSAP fee, yeah. And with all the protocol changing, thank you state government, that it's gonna require a lot more expense for them, because if somebody called in a 911 call, and it's a medical emergency call, they have to stay on, they just can't transfer the call. That E91 dispatcher has to stay-
Has to stay on the call till the ambulance is there.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
So that's costing, of course, the state's mandating it, but they're not funding it, so that, and that's just a medical emergency. Then you have fire protocol, which is coming, and police protocol, so all of this is adding up to increased cost to everybody.
Can't we hold a little bit back? What, we're supposed to send them, just send them a note and saying, this is for the PSAP, or this is for the rural radios you mandated, or whatever, can't we do that?
Unfunded mandates.
Well, when Tom, when Tom goes up to legislature, I'm gonna have him push. Have two dispatch centers, one up in Penobscot County, which functions very well, they dispatch for all of the county, which, why can't we do that down here? I know we have more people, and then have one dispatch here. New Hampshire, I think, only has two.
And then we'll have a fight apartment with Homeland Security stuff, and it will be in good shape.
Yeah, and with what the fees that they charge on your cell phones and landlines could pay for it.
Sure.
Instead of each municipality paying for it, and the counties paying for it. So it needs to be improved, but I know Tom, when he gets up there, we'll get them off the dime.
Watch out what you wish for.
And one last thing is, I've been getting some calls about the transfer station and closing the swap shop. I wondered when they would start coming in. Some people think that the swap shop should be kept open, and they say that it makes a service for people who don't have a lot of money, there's things there that they can take. They seem to feel that there's volunteers there, I haven't heard that. I heard that there were no volunteers there, so the transfer guys were the ones straightening out the building and getting rid of the junk. But I just wanted to make sure, if there's people out there who don't think we should be closing the swap shop on the weekends, please contact me or contact Public Works, Office Carly, and let's hear from you, because we're trying to improve the traffic flow and so get a little bit easier to get in and out of there.
I can see that point of view, though.
I tend to a point, but John just went this weekend, and he couldn't even get through. And that's what happens, is, you know, people stop. I have two issues with it, one is the traffic flow, and I see the need for it.
You can't move the swap shop somewhere else?
Well, that's one piece of it, but the other is, if you're going there to collect items to sell, that's my issue, because when I went there, I moved recently, I brought a lot of items there, and I had somebody in town that said that they were pulling it together for a yard sale that they were doing, and that I should think about donating to them. People are in there grabbing things and then selling them. That's not the purpose of it. I can understand if it is for somebody that has an as need, or it's going to somebody that, but that's why there's goodwill, there's other organizations. So I think we need to be careful on what is, you know, the point of having it, and does it make sense at the location? Because John couldn't even get through. He came home and says, when's it closing? And he went, you know, I mean, but that's, he's not alone. I've gone, I do the dump one as well, and I've looked at Hokey and go-
Against, more for closing it than against it.
Still got more for closing it.
So I told, I've told people that we're gonna give it a try as of June 1st and see how it works. If it doesn't solve the problems we're having, then we're doing something wrong. Second thing, and I can't disagree with this, it's a place where people stop and visit each other.
Oh, yeah, I see that, yeah.
A lot, and I see, I've seen it in every town.
And that's kinda, that's pretty good, too. Not a bad thing.
No, but it creates a safety problem, because now you got trucks going through, you got people getting frustrated, trying to throw away their garbage, when you have a lot of people walking around.
If we had more room, it'd be, I think, a little bit different.
Way down the end.
We're very confined there, so.
Especially, we're approaching the summer, I know offense, but that is not a fun place to be in the middle of the summer, so, you know, you wanna get in and out without-
I still say we should dig that whole bank in back, it's all nice gravel, Tom.
Yeah, yeah, it's something that we need to look at.
Yeah.
Be perfect for town.
I have to find the pins, did you go up there and look?
I found the pins.
You did. How far back from the top of the hill?
Pretty ways back.
Is it?
Kinda like to the end of that road that goes back to the end of the dump.
Yeah.
Right down in there.
I'll have to-
We actually own some of that field.
Yeah. I will-
That's beautiful gravel, it's like, holy-
Well, we could use some beautiful gravel.
You know, as far as the-
Love work.
As far as the swap shop, you know, I too, I see people going in there and taking stuff to resell, and, you know, if they just go and take it and leave, I don't have a problem with that, because then it's not going into our dumpsters and we're not paying to have it hauled off. Is, that's been an ongoing thing for as long as the swap shop's been open, although there've been complaints about that happening. And, you know, there are some, a few people in here who do it every week.
But really, what, you know, I mean, they must need the money. You know, I mean, that's, look at the other side, they must, maybe they need the money, and that's what they have to do, I don't know.
Some of them are organizations, so that's what I was approached with. I think maybe going down to a designated day, let's try it on the Tuesdays. It's not like we're shutting it down altogether. We're isolating it to a Tuesday, so if you have, you know, items to bring, you just have to basically make sure that you're there, and, but I think the weekends, it's tough. People are in and out, especially, you know-
Tuesdays generally aren't crazy.
Right.
They have their days, but most of the time, it's just the weekends.
Let's try it, see what happens, and if there's still a push.
Like Ed says, it's a safety issue, when you have people standing around, chit-chatting and visiting, I think it's great, but it's a, it's a lot of cars and trucks coming in and out.
Trying to, not just getting around to do the waste and the recycling, but if you have to drop something off at the metal pile, or oil or something, it's almost impossible to get close to it.
It's congested, it really is.
So we'll let it play out and see how it works. I mean, it's the whole point of trying this first.
Right.
So, otherwise, that's all I have.
Selectmen's Communications, I have another notice from Comcast Xfinity, is this is part of their commitment to keep us informed about changes on their monthly billing statements. Everybody's noticed changes on their monthly billing statements, it's just going up. You know, it just goes through all the explanations of what they're trying to do, but the one thing I pointed out here for myself is, the last thing they list is, "Helpful, easy-to-locate information, including how to contact Comcast in the payment options." So trying to reach Comcast is almost impossible sometimes, so if they're making it easier, that'd be great. But, the second thing was, is we received notice that there's gonna be, the Maine DOT is gonna be doing work on Hubbard Road, on the bridge over Little River, is there's gonna be a public hearing here next Tuesday.
Next Wednesday.
Wednesday, the 25th?
Yep.
At 6:00. And I'm not quite sure the scope of the work, they didn't include that in the information they sent, so it will be on BCTV, and so we'll find out more about it then. Bring us to Accounts Payable. A water warrant, 0840 for April 5th, 2018, in the amount of $2,621.54. Account payable warrant, 1840 from April 5th, 2018, for the amount of $70192.30. That's our school payment. Is payroll warrant, 1841 for April 12th, 2018, for the amount of $52,330.64. Account payable warrant, 1841 for April 12th, 2018, for the amount of $99,891.23. Water warrant, 0841 for April 12th, 2018, for the amount of $401.31. And payroll warrant, 1842 for April 19th, 2018, for the amount of $50,740.17. I make a motion that we pay our bills. Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor? Thank you. Brings us to new business. The Ratio Declaration and Reimbursement Application.
That's Paul.
This is an annual thing that just, where you have to declare the assessment to sales ratio to the state based on their sales analysis that they did of the previous year's sales. Last year, we were at a ratio of 105%. This year, I'm gonna certify at 100%, which means values are going up, and therefore the ratio is coming down. We have an estimated 1,400 homestead exemptions. The, that means the homestead exemption rate this year will be 20,000, instead of last year was 105% of that, so I think it was 22,000. So that'll be reduced this year as well. And the, it's all based, I based everything on the last year's tax rate, because we don't know what the next year's gonna be. So this, we need to get, you know, look for a motion to get that signed.
Any questions of Paul? I'll make a motion that we sign the Ratio Declaration and Reimbursement Application for the County of York.
I'll second your motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Patty, is, there's only one line?
Yeah, two signatures there.
Okay. Is the Town Hall Use Policy Revision.
We're gonna table that, we have to, Patty and I haven't had a chance to go through the changes.
All right. That brings us to Quick Claim Deeds and Installment Contracts. We have one installment contract. The former property owner has requested the option to repurchase the property, will make a $1,700, $1,768 down payment before May 21st, and then will take monthly payments of $200 per month to bring the tax account current before the town.
I would move we accept the land purchase installment contract for R034, tag 020, as presented.
A second.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor? Thank you. And it's always good to see these installment contracts come through, because we don't want to foreclose on people's properties, so it makes it much easier on everybody. Abatements and Supplementals.
All right, yep. Okay, the first one is for Amy and Lino Patello, 365 Villan Road. It's tax map, R001, Lot 15. Subject property is a single-family dwelling built in 1980 with an in-law apartment situated on a one-acre parcel. The owner was concerned that when we went out there and did the quarterly inspections, there was an increase in value of $58,933, which was not warranted. We went out and they submitted several sale comparables, and a real estate broker's CMA analysis that had a market estimate of between $280,000 and $325,000. We reviewed the data that was submitted, did an inspection of the property, found that the property condition was not accurately noted on the property card, and as a result, we're recommending that the assessment be reduced to, by $41,700, from $361,600 to $319,900, resulting in an abatement of $715.16.
I would move we accept the Town Assessor's recommendation for abatement for tax map, R001, Lot 15, as presented.
I'll second it.
Any discussion or questions of Paul?
Okay, second one is-
We'll take a vote on that first, Paul.
I'm sorry.
Moving my law.
All those in favor? Thank you.
All right, second one, Edward Gudnun and Claudia Bellavia, 34 Wentworth Road, tax map, R061, Lot 3-A2. Subject property is a colonial-style home situated on a 2.59-acre parcel. The owner noted that the garage space was being assessed as living area, requested a correction and an abatement of the taxes. We did an inspection of the property, did in fact verify that the garage space was not living area, but was being assessed as such. And, so we're recommending that the assessment be reduced 25,000 from $383,900 to $358,900 in an abatement of $428.75.
I would move we accept the Town Assessor's recommendation for abatement for tax map, R061, Lot 3, Tag A, Tag 2, as presented.
I'll second it.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor?
The property owner is here, but I believe she has to wait until the second public comment, is that true?
Did she want to address us? It is, sure. Step on up. It's a quick meeting, but I still don't like to have people hang around if they don't have to.
Just my only question is, I wasn't aware that the property was being assessed at that until the neighbor next door had, you know, was selling their property, and we, you know, we happened to discuss taxes, and then they had the inspection done. Now, my question is, if I owned the house for 13 years, and I've been paying, overpaying on that amount of taxes for those years, and I'm, you know, wondering if there's any kind of compensation I'll get from, it wasn't my error, and I'm just curious if there's, you know, if there would be anything, like an abatement or whatever, for the years I've been paying it, paying for the house being at a different square footage, or however they come up with the calculations for that property. Or maybe in other words, I would ask if it was the other way around, and they found out that I was underpaying for 13 years, would they say, oh, it's washed, you don't have to worry about it? So that's just my only question, so I'd just like to have that, maybe somebody look into that or address it, or get back to me on it.
Actually, I think that they're only allowed to go back the one year by state law, is it? They believe so?
One year, and for supplement, it's the same thing, so if we did find that we weren't charging somebody for something, it would be the same thing. We can only go back a year, we couldn't go back for the person for, you know, five years We couldn't go back for the person for, you know, five years or whatever.
Still good to ask.
Right.
Okay, so the, we already voted on it, right?
Yes.
We're all set, okay. Okay, so the, the final thing I have is a supplement. This was a property that was not on the tax rolls last year and should have been. There was an occupancy permit that was granted on three twenty-two of seventeen. And I don't, not sure how this happened. It may have been the passing of one of our employees that, you know, this got overlooked. So we did notify the people and that we're looking to supplement the property for two thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars and seventy-five cents.
I would move we accept the Town Assessor's recommendation for supplemental warrant. Two, which one is this?
Map R zero zero one.
Just basically says that they have to come in and pay that amount.
Yeah, they'll just get a, they'll get a regular tax bill.
Where's the map number? There it is. For map.
See, we did, you know.
It was just one year it was missed?
It was just one year.
For map, R zero zero one, tag three, tag one, as presented.
Uh, yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you, Paul. Three places to sign on that one. All right. Abatements and supplementals. That brings us to our second public comment. Is anybody has a second public comment? Is step to the microphone and give us your name and where you live and tell us your complaint. Unless you've given us good words.
We have a executive session tonight to talk about what we didn't finish last time.
Yeah, we'll go, we'll go to that next before we go to an executive session.
So I'll make a, a public comment. I just want to say, earlier this week, I had the opportu, or was it last week? Last week, I had the opportunity to head down to New York City to see the Samsung Solve for Tomorrow Group from Noble High School, who went down there to compete with the ten national finalists. They did an amazing job. They didn't win, but stiff competition. I think it was three middle schools that won. But they had, what was it? A computer app that they did for each of theirs and I, we didn't. So I think that might have been a tipping factor. But regardless of that, they did a wonderful job. The school receives fifty thousand dollars in, in Samsung technology.
Really?
So kudos to them. And I'm sure the school will be very grateful that, that they received that. I also want to put a big shout out to the teacher, Mrs. Yohang Soon, who was a STEM teacher. She did an amazing job down there pushing those kids and getting them into that competition. So did a great job. And I think maybe someone had fifty thousand dollars, she should probably get a, maybe a laptop or a tablet or something. So good job to, to all those people who, who competed. And there was a lot of people involved in that, you know, the, the town water department. A lot of other students were involved as well. So good job to everybody.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was really a testament to the students of how they put that all together and held it all together after all these competitions.
Yeah, great job.
So. It was, um, you have something you wanted to bring up, Mike?
No, we're going to go to executive session.
Oh, we will be.
That's what I asked.
Yeah. Is, I'm going to take some, is our other business, non-agenda items out of order here before we go to an executive session. We all received emails about complaints at the service window. Is, and, you know, hopefully that's been resolved. But is, there was another incident later that week where somebody came in to register a car, I believe, without the proper documentation. And when there were some questions raised, is the, the gentleman left under some curious conditions. And I believe the police were called because of that. And the reason I bring this up is, you know, we've discussed this before. And, you know, we had talked about it earlier this year about putting it in the budget and we decided we didn't have the money to do it. But I think that we really need to look at, you know, video cameras in the lobby.
You know something, it's cheap money. No cameras in there, it's.
It's for protection of our employees.
Siri will hook you right up.
That way, that way we don't have to have a he said, she said thing. We'll have the video there. I do know that they had looked at some prices earlier this year and I believe it was under four thousand dollars.
We should, we should get that taken care of. In both, in both directions, too, to see. We could have a bad employee someday. It would work both ways.
Right.
Absolutely.
So. If you could talk with our finance director and see if we can find some money and so we can move on that. You know, is nowadays with, with everything else going on, is, as, as you said, you know, it protects us both ways.
Exactly.
You know, is it protects the public, it protects our employees. Is I know we, we have in our budget for the, the key card access to all the doors. So that'll make things a little more secure. But during office hours, when people are coming and going, is I think this is something that we really need to step up to.
One thing I, and I hate to be this type of guy, but when you call the town hall and you want to talk to somebody, unless you know their extension, you gotta sit there for half hour. They're going to tell you, the phone fuzz ring extension. It doesn't get answered.
We'll get you a directory.
Well, no, yeah, what I'm saying is, is whatever happens, someone answering the phone and saying, okay, we do it, we still answer it at the phone unless we're on a, I mean, I can't see not having a human being at the end of the phone answer you. It's just like, drives me mental.
Is, but there are times.
I make sure my office does that. I mean, I don't care. That phone goes, I'm in there and I'm, I hear the phone go off and they don't answer it. I'm right on it. It just, it just. You know, redo the, the section. That was done. It's going to be a simple way of doing it. One, two, three, four, five, not one oh one or one oh two, three and.
You know, is.
It's not good.
In, in defense, in defense of the, the town personnel, is.
It's not the town personnel, it's the phone.
Is a lot of, a lot of ti, a lot of times, you know, when I come in during the day, is there are people at the windows waiting. And so to have one of the customer service people, you know, break off helping a customer to answer the phone.
Oh, no, I can't, yeah, I can't, it's just a bunch of people in the building.
So is, uh.
Well, it only rings at the extension you call. So if you hit zero, you're going to get the front office. If you hit one one oh, you'll get my phone.
Right.
And there is a list. If you push seven, I think.
Could you email me a copy of that?
Yes.
See?
I'll put it right on my favorites.
Um, any other business and non-agenda items?
I just want to remind people that our next meeting, our Port City Architecture, will be doing a presentation on the fire station. And if you go onto BCTV, Terry has done a tape on the fire station, talking with the chief and going through a lot of stuff. So you'll be well informed if you go on to see the BCTV video that's been done. And also watch our meeting on the first of May to see.
How's the site thing coming? For the site, for the fire department?
Well, we'll, we'll see.
Yeah, that, that hasn't been decided. You know, we, we, we thought that would do this presentation and get people out there. Is actually is Terry and the fire department are working on the second installment is where they're going to be doing a review of all three sites that have been proposed and the pluses and minuses and.
What's the date of our next meeting anyway?
May first.
May first is our next meeting. So.
Only the seventeenth, huh?
Is, the only other thing we have is an executive session to the discussion of personnel. Is I will read a letter from Selectman Josh Plant, who could not make it tonight. Says, says, "I will not be at tonight's meeting. I would like to make a public note of my request that Board Chair, Tom Wright, recuse himself for any discussion in executive session or on the public record regarding the performance of review of the town manager. With his wife being under the direct supervision of the town manager, it is wholly inappropriate for Mr. Wright to grade the town manager's performance. It is a conflict of interest." Thank you, Josh Plant. So on that note, I'm going to make an emotion that we go into an executive session under Title One, subsection four oh five, six A, for discussion of personnel.
Second.
All those in favor? We will not be making any decisions during this. So is, the regulars' meeting will be adjourned as of now.